Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to legislative session of the Salisbury City Council. Today is April 10th, 2023. Just a couple of announcements in case of emergency. We ask that everybody please exit this room, take a right and go down the stairs. If that way is blocked, take a left, go around the corner and down the stairs. Please do not use the elevator in case of emergency. If anyone wishes to make a public comment, the public comment section is at the end of our meeting. We have forms on the table by the door. Please fill that out and hand to our city clerk, Kim Nichols. We will, at this time, say the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody could rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will take a moment for silent meditation. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Oath of Office for our city administrator, Andy Kitzrow. This, uh, did you bring the knife for the blood oath, Michelle?
You know what? I left it in the car.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll have to handle that after the meeting.
Postpone.
So administering the oath is our esteemed clerk of the city, of the Circuit Court, James Bo McAllister.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Floor is yours, sir.
I state your name.
I, Andy Kitzrow.
Do swear and affirm.
Do swear and affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And that I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and the laws thereof.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
To the best of, and say that one more time.
To the best of my skill and judgment.
I don't know if I can do that. And to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of.
Execute the office of.
City Administrator for Salisbury, Maryland.
City Administrator for Salisbury, Maryland.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state. All right.
Thank you, Bo. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is a proclamation. It's going to be presented by Mayor Jack Heath. Mayor Heath?
Good evening, Mr. President. If I might digress for a second. I was prior to the swearing in, I was going to say this is one of the most brilliant young men that I've ever known. After he skipped the line, I'm not sure that's true anymore. No, seriously, seriously. I mean this wholeheartedly when I say this. Andy is one of the few people I've met in my life, when you ask him a question or you start talking about a topic, you can see him think. You can see the wheels going. And I do mean that he is one of the most brilliant young men that I've met. And I, otherwise, I wouldn't have nominated him. Thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. I have a proclamation. Whereas the Fair Housing Act has prohibited discrimination in housing, and whereas equal opportunity for all is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, and city, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, and whereas housing is a critical component of family and community health and stability, and whereas the Shore Housing Resource Board Incorporated, a private nonprofit organization operating in Somerset, Wycomico, and Worcester Counties, consists of volunteers representing businesses, government, nonprofit agencies, and individuals committed to promoting and educating fair housing, and whereas the Shore Housing Resource Board thrives daily to make fair housing a reality for every resident, and whereas the zoning ordinance of the city of Salisbury is intended to affirmatively further fair housing in the city of Salisbury by abiding by the provision of a Fair Housing Act of 1968 as amended and promoting fair housing choice for all residents in the city of Salisbury, assuring the rights of all individuals that are identified as members of protected class by the federal government and preventing discrimination in housing based on a person's race, color, national origin, religion, sex, familial status, or disability. I now, John R. Heath, Mayor of the city of Salisbury, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month in our city and encourage all residents to participate in creating, promoting fair housing opportunities for everyone in their community.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I will call for a motion and a second to adopt the legislative agenda.
So move.
Second.
Ooh, Michelle barely beat you.
Got to be quicker.
And any questions or comments about the agenda? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
Good evening.
Nichols?
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the February 27th, 2023 council meeting minutes, the March 6th, 2023 work session minutes, March 13th, 2023 council meeting minutes, and the March 20th, 2023 work session minutes and special meeting minutes. Resolution number 3247, approving the appointment of Tanya Dickson to the Disability Advisory Committee for term ending April 2026, and resolution number 3248, declaring Red Brick Holdings LLC eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits for property located at 117-119 West Main. That's it.
Questions or comments about the items on the consent agenda?
No.
No.
Call for the question. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. Is Tanya Dickerson here? Okay, so she's not here. Is she on Zoom?
She's on there.
All right.
Tanya, yeah, she's on the Zoom.
She's on Zoom.
Dickerson, we wanted to thank you for serving on this committee. And we appreciate your time and commitment and volunteering your time to serve. And anyone that wishes to serve on a committee may go to the city's website under the section for the mayor, and there's a listing of committees with openings. At this time, we have the award of bids. Listed as Jennifer Miller, but you are not Jennifer Miller. So Mike Low, you have the floor, sir.
Good evening, council, members of the public. Michael Low, I'm the contract specialist for the city. We have three items on the award of bids agenda this evening. The Department of Procurement seeks award of bid approval from the city council for solicitations as defined in the packet. The city followed required bidding practices as defined by the Salisbury Code of Ordinances and publicly posted these solicitations on the city's procurement portal, state of Maryland's website, e-Maryland Marketplace Advantage, and we also reach out to our internal listings. The first item is RFP 23-104, the Salisbury Town Square Construction. This project will be administered from the Department of Infrastructure and Development. The scope of work is construction of Unity Square, a new public space in downtown Salisbury that includes a water feature, children's play area, and flexible space for public outdoor gatherings. Proposals were received October 7th, '22. We had the opening, or it was posted October 7th, '22. We had the opening November 7th, '22, and we received one proposal. The highest-ranked responsive responsible bidder was Harkins Contracting Incorporated. Total cost of the project, $3,468,944, which are funded in the breakdown of accounts shown in your packet. The next item we have on approval for award of bids is the ITBA-23-108, the citywide HVAC services contract. This is a citywide contract, provides technical services and materials required for emergency repair, routine maintenance, and upgrades to city HVAC systems within various facilities. The bid was posted in January 23rd, 2023. We opened bids March 9th, '23. We received a total of two bids. The lowest responsible or responsive bidder is Electrical Automation Services Incorporated. Would go by EZ for short. Approximate spend on the contract each year is roughly $293,000. We had spent between FY '20 and '22, so the historical run of the term of the contract. And the GL counts vary depending on the division that they were in. That number I don't foresee being as high in this three-year span, but we had some substantial upgrades that we had, you know, failures that we had done. I think Station 16 was actually one of those. They had a unit go down Trote Street when we took over that space. The award will be an indefinite, delivery indefinite quantity contract. That's why it's called an on-call contract. We set master price agreement for rates, labor, and parts. Services will be provided to the city, will be of an on-call nature, and no minimum purchase implied or guaranteed. The contract includes a renewal clause. The city reserves the right to renew all portions of the contract at same prices, terms, and conditions for an additional two one-year terms contingent upon mutual agreement. The last item we have on award of bids is very similar in nature. This is RPA-23-105, citywide generator maintenance. This is a citywide contract to provide all the technical services and materials required for routine maintenance and repair and low bank testing of all the standby backup emergency generators at various facilities in the city. We advertised proposals January 18th, '23, open proposals February 22nd, '23. We received three proposals. The highest-ranked responsive and responsible vendor is Fidelity Power Systems out of Seaford, Delaware. Approximate spend on this contract from FY '20 to '22 is $203,000 across all city departments. And this is also an on-call contract with no, no minimum purchase implied or guaranteed, and also includes a renewal clause.
Thank you, Mike. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve the award of bids.
So move.
Second.
Okay, any questions about any of the items in the award of bids?
None.
All right. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving the award of bids, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Mike. Appreciate it. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3249.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Kitzrow?
Resolution number 3249, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury to approve and adopt rules of procedure for the Salisbury Board of Appeals. Whereas pursuant to ordinance number 2769, the city of Salisbury has amended the Salisbury City Code to combine the Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the Boarding, Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and the Board of Zoning Appeals into a new board known as the Board of Appeals. And whereas Section 17.12.090 of the Salisbury City Code provides that the Board of Appeals shall adopt rules necessary for carrying out the provisions of that chapter. And whereas in accordance with the foregoing attached heretofore as Exhibit 1, are proposed rules and procedure for the Board of Appeals. Whereas by this resolution, the council hereby approves the rules of procedure for the Board of Appeals attached heretofore as Exhibit 1. And now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, the rules of procedure for the Salisbury Board of Appeals attached heretofore and incorporated herein as Exhibit 1 are hereby approved and adopted. Section 2 is the intent of the mayor and the council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of the resolution shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3 is further the intention of the mayor and the council of the city of Salisbury that if in any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this resolution should be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the sections of paragraph, subsection, clause, or provisions. So adjudged, and all other provisions of the resolution shall remain the same and be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth herein above and Exhibit 1 attached heretofore are incorporated into this section of the resolution as if such recitals and Exhibit 1 were specifically set forth at length in this section 4.
Any questions or comments about this resolution? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving resolution number 3249, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3250 for first reading.
So move.
I've got to read this one. So, "Resolution of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, adopting a formal employment agreement for the position of city administrator. Whereas the charter of the city of Salisbury as set forth in SE-4-3 requires a city administrator in the office of the mayor who shall be the chief administrative officer of the city. Whereas, the council of the city of Salisbury acknowledges that the position of city administrator is of great importance to the city and is of such importance that the position must be at the pleasure of the mayor and council. Whereas, in order to attract highly qualified candidates to the position of city administrator, the council of the city of Salisbury deems it necessary and appropriate to develop a form employment agreement consistent with the charter of the city of Salisbury and further memorializing expectations, obligations, and certain assurances by and between the city and its city administrator. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, that the form employment agreement for the position of city administrator attached heretofore and incorporated herein as Exhibit 1 is hereby adopted and approved. Section 2, it is the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that each provision of this resolution shall be deemed independent of all other provisions herein. Section 3, it is further the intention of the mayor and council of the city of Salisbury that if any section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision of this resolution shall be adjudged invalid, unconstitutional, or otherwise unenforceable under applicable Maryland or federal law, such adjudication shall apply only to the section, paragraph, subsection, clause, or provision. So adjudged, and all other provisions of this resolution shall remain and shall be deemed valid and enforceable. Section 4, the recitals set forth herein above and Exhibit 1 attached heretofore are incorporated into this section of the resolution as if such recitals and Exhibit 1 were specifically set forth at length in this section 4. The above resolution was introduced and read and passed at the regular meeting of the city, of the council of the city of Salisbury held on this 10th day of April, 2023, and is to become effective immediately upon adoption. Any questions or comments about the resolution?
None.
Call for the question. All those in favor of approving resolution number 3250?
Did you get a motion?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Sorry.
Yeah, April.
And Angela.
Moved, and then Angela seconded. Call for the question. All those in favor of approving resolution number 3250, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Congratulations, Mr. Kitzrow.
Even with the mess up earlier, still.
We overlooked it.
We forgive you.
You did a great job reading the other resolution, so thank you, sir.
Yeah, annexation's coming up.
Yes.
Hold your breath.
That's the meat and potatoes. So at this time, like Mr. Kitzrow said, we have some public hearings. First up is a resolution.
3201. 3201.
How did I get turned around? Resolution number 3201, proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding to corporate limits of Salisbury, known as South Division Street Annexation. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve this resolution.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Kitzrow?
Resolution number 3201, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury to be known as South Division Street Annexation, beginning at a point being an existing corner of the corporate limits line of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, near the westerly line of South Division Street at its intersection with the northerly right-of-way line of Only Road extended thence by and with the said line of Only Road, north 89 degrees, 22 minutes, 31 seconds east, 232 decimal point, decimal point two six feet to a point on the said line of Only Road and the corporate limits line, thence leaving the said line and by with the easterly line of lands of OT200LLC, north 36 degrees, 13 minutes, 1 seconds east, 348.00 feet to a point on the northerly line of the said OT2005LLC line lands, excuse me, 08, thence by and with the said line of OT005,11, excuse me, LLC, north 89 degrees, 47 minutes, 42 seconds west, 224.85 feet to a point on existing corporate line, limit line near the westerly right-of-way of South Division Street, thence by and with the said line of south 4 degrees, 23 minutes, 25 seconds west, 351.82 feet to the point beginning, containing 1.83 acres, more or less. Let's get to the good part. Whereas the city of Salisbury has received a petition for annexation dated February 21st, 2022, attached heretofore as Exhibit 1 and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth within, signed by at least 25% of the persons who are resident registered voters or the persons who are owners of at least 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area sought to be annexed binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury to be known as South Division Street Annexation, beginning at a point contiguous to and binding upon the existing corporate limits lines of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, being on the westerly right-of-way line of South Division Street at the south corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, continuing around the perimeter of the affected property to the beginning, point of beginning being all the real property identified as MAP 0048, grid 0002, parcel 199, MAP 0048, grid 0002, parcel 200, and MAP 0048, grid 0003, parcel 0202, and all of that certain portions of public road right-of-way known as South Division Street, and further being the same real property more particularly described in the legal description attached heretofore as Exhibit 2 and incorporated as if fully set herein and being the same public right-of-way particularly depicted on that certain platent title, Annexation Plat, attached heretofore as Exhibit 3 and incorporated as if fully set forth herein and hereinafter referred to as Annexation Property. And whereas the city of Salisbury has caused to be made a certification of the signatures of said petition for an annexation, the city of Salisbury has verified that the person signing the petition represents at least 25% of the persons who are eligible voters and property owners own 25% of the assessed valuation of real property in the area to be annexed all as of September 15th, 2022, as set forth in the certification by Leslie C. Sherrill, surveyor of the city of Salisbury, attached heretofore as Exhibit 4 and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein. And whereas it appears that the aforementioned petition for annexation dated May 6th, 2021 meets all the requirements of applicable state and local laws, and whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution, providing for the city of Salisbury's annexation of the annexation property as set forth herein, shall begin hereby as scheduled for April 10th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the city of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, it is proposed and recommended that the municipal boundaries of the city of Salisbury be changed so as to annex and include within the said municipal boundaries of the city of Salisbury at the certain real property more particularly described as Exhibits 2 and 3, attached heretofore and incorporated by reference as if fully set forth herein. Section 2, the annexation of the annexed property being hereby is approved by the council of the city of Salisbury, subject to all terms, conditions, and agreements contained in the aforementioned property description, the proposed annexation agreement and annexation plan as attached as Exhibits 2, 5, and 6 respectively, each of which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein as if all such terms, conditions, agreements contained in such exhibits are specifically set forth at length in this resolution. Section 3, the zoning map of the city of Salisbury shall be amended to include annexed property within the certain zoning districts of the city of Salisbury identified as the college and university with said real property newly annexed into the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury as contemplated by this resolution, as presented zoned LB-1 Light Business and Institutional in accordance with its existing zoning laws of Wycomico, Maryland. Section 4, pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, the council and the city of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on the resolution on April 10th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. in the council chambers at the city county office building, and the city administrator shall cause a public notice of the time and place of the said public hearing to be published, not fewer than two times and not less than two week intervals, and at least one newspaper of general circulation in the city of Salisbury. With said public notice shall specify time and place at which the council of the city of Salisbury will at that hold the aforementioned public hearing, and the date of which shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication specified herein above. Sections 5 through Section 8 is boilerplate in all of our resolutions.
Okay, if there is anyone who wishes to speak in the public hearing, please stand and be sworn in by our city clerk, Kim Nichols. Okay, seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Once again, if anybody wishes to speak, please rise and let our city clerk swear you in. Seeing none, at this time, I will close the public hearing. And I will call for the question. All those in favor of resolution number 3201, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3202.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Kitzrow?
Great. Resolution number 3202, a resolution of the council of the city of Salisbury proposing the annexation to the city of Salisbury of a certain area of land contiguous to and binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury to be known as South Division Street Annexation, beginning at a point being an existing corner of the corporate limits line of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, near the westerly line of South Division Street at its intersection with the northerly right-of-way line of Only Road extended thence by and with the said line of Only Road, north 89 degrees, 22 minutes, 31 seconds east, 232.26 feet to a point on the said line of Only Road and corporate limit line. limit line, X1,201,992.98, Y188,852.62, thence leaving the said line and by and with the easterly line of the lands of OT2005 LLC, north 33 degrees, 13 minutes, 1 seconds, east 348.00 feet to a point on the northerly line of the said OT2005 LLC lands, X1,202, 012.51, Y189,200.1, excuse me, 08, thence by and with the said line of OT2005 LLC, north 89 degrees, 47 minutes, 42 seconds, west 224.85 feet to a point on the existing corporate line, corporate limit line, near the westerly right-of-way of South Division Street, X1, 201,787.66, Y189,200.88, thence by and with the said line, south 4 degrees, 23 minutes, 25 seconds, west 351.82 feet to the point of beginning containing 1.83 acres, more or less. Whereas the city of Salisbury has received a petition for an annexation dated February 21st, 2022, attached hereto and incorporated, excuse me, incorporated by reference as it fully set forth herein, signed by at least 25% of persons who are resident registered voters and the persons who are owners of at least 25% of assessed valuation of the real property in the area sought to be annexed, binding upon the corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, to be known as South Division Street Annexation, beginning at a point contiguous to and binding upon the existing corporate limit lines of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, being on the westerly right-of-way line of South Division Street at the southern corporate limits of the city of Salisbury, continuing around the perimeter of affected property to the point of beginning being all the real property identified as map 0084, grid 0002, parcel 199, map 0048, grid 0002, parcel 200, and map 0048, grid 003, parcel 0202, and all of the certain portions of the public road right-of-way known as South Division Street, further being the same real property more particularly described in the legal description attached here too as Exhibit 2, and incorporated as if fully set forth herein, and being the same public right-of-way more particularly depicted on the certain plat entitled Annexation Plat, and attached thereto as Exhibit 3 and incorporated as if fully set forth herein. And whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-415, the city of Salisbury is required to adopt an annexation plan for the proposed annexation of the annexed property, and whereas pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, a public hearing on this resolution provided by the Council of the City of Salisbury, approval of the annexation plan for the city of Salisbury annexation of the annexation property as set forth herein, shall begin hereby as scheduled for April 10th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. And now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury as follows. Section 1, the annexation plan for the OT2005, LLC, South Division Street Annexation to the city of Salisbury, attached hereto as Exhibit 4 and incorporated as a fully set forth herein, known as the annexation plan B, and hereby is adopted by the city of Salisbury's annexation of the annexed properties and is contemplated by this resolution. Section 2 pursuant to Maryland Code Local Government 4-406, the Council of the City of Salisbury shall hold a public hearing on this resolution on April 10th, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. In the council chambers at the city county office building, and the city administrator shall cause a public notice of time and place of the said public hearing to be published no fewer than two times and not less than weekly intervals, and at least one newspaper of general circulation in the city of Salisbury. With said public notice shall specify time and place at which the Council of the City of Salisbury will hold the aforementioned public hearing, the date of which shall be no sooner than 15 days after the final required date of publication as specified herein above. Sections 3 through section 6 are boilerplate.
Mr. Kitzrow? So at this time, anyone who wishes to speak in the public hearing, please stand so that the city clerk can swear you in. Seeing none, I will open the public hearing. Once again, anyone who wishes to speak, please stand so the city clerk can swear you in.
Congressman Islet from Park and Associates.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true?
Please come to the podium.
I'm just here to go over any questions that may be had over the site plan for the annexation.
Anyone else have any wish to speak on this? Don't have any takers?
Perfect.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing, and we will call for the vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution number 3202, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Next up, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2785 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Yes, she's bringing the water, which is a good idea.
Good afternoon, mayor, council members of the public, Andy, congratulations. Ordinance number 2785, it's before you for second reading. It is an ordinance of the city of Salisbury amending section 17.136.010, 17.136.030, and 17.136.050 of the Salisbury City Code to permit additional residential uses and revise development standards for Harbor Point Phase 3. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Okay, if there's anyone, this is also a public hearing because it's a text amendment, so if anyone wishes to speak in the public hearing, please rise so that the city clerk may swear you in. All right. Seeing none, I will open the public hearing, and once again, if anybody wishes to speak, please rise so that the city clerk can swear you in. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. At this time, I will call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2785 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Thank you. All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2787 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ooh, Megan got in there before you did.
Ordinance number 2787, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY 2023 general fund budget to appropriate funds to purchase and customize police department vehicles with proper police equipment. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
Questions or comments on the ordinance? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2787 for second reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. This time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2789 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2789, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury, Maryland, to set fees for the newly created Board of Appeals and to amend and supplement the fee schedule for FY 2023. Whereas pursuant to ordinance number 2769, the city of Salisbury has amended the Salisbury City Code to combine the Housing Board of Adjustment and Appeals, the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and the Board of Zoning Appeals into a brand, or into a new board known as the Board of Appeals. And whereas, as further detailed in ordinance number 2769, the fees for matters before the Board of Appeals are to be set from time to time by the Council of the City. Whereas ordinance number 2723 set fees for FY 2023, and the city desires to supplement that ordinance by establishing fees for the newly created Board of Appeals. Whereas the City Department of Infrastructure and Development desires to amend certain provisions of ordinance 2723 by revising and clarifying certain fees for FY 2023. Whereas as detailed on Exhibit 1, the City Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends revising the language relating to the development plan review fee to add further clarification and description. Whereas the water meter fee charged by the City Department of Infrastructure and Development reflects the actual cost of the meter. Due to supply chain issues, the cost of water meters has increased. As detailed on Exhibit 1, the City Department of Infrastructure and Development seeks to amend the water meter fee to ensure that the fee is reflective of the market rate. Whereas the water meter setting fee charged by the City Department of Infrastructure and Development reflects the cost for city staff to install the meter, previously the water meter setting fee and water meter fee were combined. Exhibit 1 creates a distinction between those two fees. And whereas the Department of Infrastructure and Development recommends that the attached fee schedule be added to ordinance number 2723 so that the fees may be collected in FY 2023. Section 1 of ordinance 2789 reads that the fee amounts included in the attached Exhibit 1 are adopted by the city of Salisbury, and the amount set for shall supersede the prior corresponding fee amounts prescribed in the city municipal code, ordinance number 2723, until one or more of said fees are subsequently amended.
Questions or comments about this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2789 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2792.
So moved.
Second.
Orders number 2792, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the Department of Housing and Community Development for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $20,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with the 2023 Maryland Folk Festival. Whereas the city of Salisbury in April 2022 submitted an operating assistance grant application to the Department of Housing and Community Development referred to as DHCD, a principal department of the state of Maryland for financial assistance and carrying out community development activities specifically to include assistance with the Maryland Folk Festival to be held in the city of Salisbury. And whereas DHCD has awarded operating grant assistance funds to the city of Salisbury in the amount of $20,000. And whereas in order to accept such funds, the city must enter into a operating assistance grant program, grant agreement, a copy of which is attached and incorporated as Exhibit 1. And whereas section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the city of Salisbury. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the Council of the city. Section 1 of ordinance number 2792 reads, Acting Mayor Jack Heath, on behalf of the city of Salisbury, is hereby authorized to enter into the grant agreement with the Department of Housing and Community Development, attached hereto and incorporated herein as Exhibit 1, for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $20,000 to be allocated for assistance with the Maryland Folk Festival. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget being hereby is amended as follows: Increase DHCD revenue account number 10500-423601-XXXX by 20,000, and B, increase operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXXX by that same amount, which is 20,000.
Questions or comments from the council?
Mr. President, excuse me, if I may, is that the correct ordinance number?
The numbers, the ordinances in the packet are...
Are correct.
Are correct. What was on the sheet was not.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Any, any other questions or comments?
No.
I'll call for the question. All those in favor approving ordinance number 2792 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 279 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
2790.
No, 2791.
Okay.
Orders number 2791, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to enter into a contract with the National Endowment of the Arts, NEA, for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $10,000, and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with the 81st National Folk Festival. Whereas the city of Salisbury in February 2020 submitted a grant for arts projects application to NEA, an independent federal agency established by Congress for financial assistance and opportunities for public engagement with the arts and arts education, specifically to include assistance with the 81st National Folk Festival. And whereas NEA has granted, has awarded grants for arts projects funds to the city of Salisbury in the amount of $10,000. And whereas the $10,000 granted to the city by NEA will be utilized to provide funding for the 81st National Folk Festival, and to reimburse a portion of funds spent by the city on artist fees, interpretive signage, marketing, and photography costs associated with this event. Whereas section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the Council of the city of Salisbury. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the Council of the city. Section 1 of ordinance 2791 reads, Mayor John R. Heath, on behalf of the city of Salisbury, is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the National Endowment for the Arts for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $10,000 to be allocated for assistance with the 81st National Folk Festival. Section 2, the city of Salisbury's grant fund budget being hereby is amended as follows: A, increase NEA revenue account number 0, I'm sorry, 10500-4XXXX-XXX by 10,000, and B, increase operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXXX by that same amount, which is 10,000.
Any questions or comments on this ordinance? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor approving ordinance number 2791 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, and the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2790 for first reading.
Second.
Orders number 2790, an ordinance of the city of Salisbury to amend authorized positions to include an additional event coordinator position for the Arts, Business, and Cultural Department. Whereas the Department of Arts, Business, and Culture has a need for a new position titled Events Coordinator. And whereas an events coordinator will enable the city to continue to execute the city's staple downtown Salisbury events, including, but not limited to, Third Friday's Friday Night Live Concert Series and the New Year's Eve Ball Drop. And whereas this position will assume a key role in supporting the development of ABCDs internal events, including, but not limited to, Hops on the River, River Fest, Zoo Stampede, Halloween Happenings, and the Maryland Folk Festival. And whereas because surplus funds have been identified in the city's Development Services account, no additional funds are needed to fund this newly created position. Ordinance number 2790 reads as follows: Section 1, the city of Salisbury's authorized positions be amended to include an additional position titled Events Coordinator and assigned a grade 7.
Any questions or comments on this ordinance?
Okay, so this, this is a new position to be totally funded through our general funds? This isn't grant? Okay.
The event coordinator position?
Yeah.
Yeah, so this is what we discussed at the work session where the funding was allocated to Salisbury Arts and Entertainment District. Part of that allocation included the salary for the executive director position, Jamie Heater, so now that the funding's not going there, it's internalized to fund a similar position.
Okay. So it's not new, it's not a new...
It's not new, the counting's new, yeah. So because of the position authorization count we have to do, technically it is a new allocation of a position. That's why we have to go through this process.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor approving ordinance number 2790 for first reading, please signify by saying aye. saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2793 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Who's it, Megan?
Orders number 2793, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to authorize the mayor to execute, or to enter into a contract with the Maryland State Arts Council for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $4,000 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds to be used for eligible expenses associated with Bundle Up and Get Outside. Whereas the City of Salisbury in December 2022 submitted a creativity grant application to the Maryland State Arts Council, a principal department of the state of Maryland, for financial assistance in carrying out community art activities specifically to include assistance to fund stipends for the artists associated with Bundle Up and Get Outside. And whereas MSAC has awarded a creativity grant fund to the City of Salisbury in the amount of $4,000. And whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the City of Salisbury. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of Salisbury. Section one of ordinance number 2793 reads, Mayor John R. Heath, on behalf of the City of Salisbury, is hereby authorized to enter into a grant agreement with the Maryland State Arts Council for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $4,000 to be allocated for assistance with Bundle Up and Get Outside. Section two, the City of Salisbury's grant fund budget B hereby is amended as follows. A, increase MSAC revenue account number 10500-42XXX-XXXX by 4,000. And B, increase operating expense account number 10500-546006-XXXX by that same amount, which is $4,000.
Questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2793 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2794 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Orders number 2794, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to transfer from the Parking Fund and appropriate funds for the Parking Fund Automation Project and the Parking Capital Project Fund. Whereas the city has determined efficiencies can be realized by investing in updated software, gates, and parking lot and parking garage improvements. And whereas the city has estimates indicating that 170,000 would be required to update software and hardware, install barcode integration, and to make related electrical improvements to modernize the city's parking operations. And whereas the city has found a project to fund $20,000, so an additional 150,000 is required to complete the project. And whereas the city has determined an additional appropriation for the Parking Automation Project is required in the amount of 150,000. And whereas funding for the project shall be provided by the transfer of 150,000 from the Parking Fund. And whereas the appropriations necessary to execute the appropriation of 150,000, as provided here and above, must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the City of Salisbury. Section one of ordinance 2794 reads, Mayor John R. Heath is hereby authorized to appropriate funds for Parking Automation Project in the amount of 150,000. Section two, the City of Salisbury's FY 23 Parking Fund Budget B hereby is amended as follows. Increase revenue for project description known as none, account description, current year surplus, account number 10100-469810, in the amount of 150,000. Increase expense for project description none, account description, Transfer Parking Capital Projects Fund, account number 31154-599300, in the amount of 150,000. Section three, the city's Parking Fund Project Fund Budget B hereby is amended as follows. Increase revenue for Parking Automation with account description Pago, account number 94001-469110-TBD, amount 150,000. Increase expense Parking Automation, account description Equipment, account number 94001-577030-TBD, by that same amount, which is 150,000.
Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2794 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2795 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Orders number 2795, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Wacomico County Local Behavioral Health Authority for the purpose of accepting community mental health services COVID relief block grant funds in the amount of $12,562 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the homeless services case specialist position. Whereas Critical Time Intervention, CTI, is a time-limited evidence-based practice model designed to mobilize support for vulnerable individuals during periods of transition, including individuals transitioning from homelessness to permanent supportive housing. And whereas the Wacomico County Health Department received funding from the Behavioral Health Administration for the block grants for community mental health services COVID relief specific to delivery of CTI services. And whereas the Wacomico County Local Behavioral Health Authority has awarded the City of Salisbury a block grant for community mental health services in the amount of $12,562. And whereas the city's homeless services case specialist position will use CTI principles to assist individuals who are transitioning from homelessness to permanent supportive housing. And whereas a permissible use of the CTI funds is to partially cover the salary cost of the homeless services case specialist. And whereas in order to accept the CTI funds, the city must enter into a memorandum of understanding, or MOU, with Wacomico County LBHA to define the permitted expenditures and conditions related to the CTI funds. A copy of that MOU is attached as Exhibit One. And whereas Section 7-29 of the Salisbury City Charter prohibits the city from entering into a contract that requires an expenditure not appropriated or authorized by the council of the City of Salisbury. And whereas appropriations necessary to execute the purpose of this grant must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city. Section one of ordinance 2795 reads, Acting Mayor John Jack R. Heath is hereby authorized to enter into the MOU attached here to as Exhibit One with the Wacomico County LBHA on behalf of the City of Salisbury for the city's acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $12,562. Section two, the City of Salisbury's Grant Fund Budget B hereby is amended as follows. A, increase MHBG-SAMSHA revenue account number 10530-425XXX-XXXX by $12,562. And B, increase salaries, non-clerical expense account number 10530-501002-XXXX by that same amount, which is $12,562.
Any questions or comments on this item?
None.
Call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2795 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Last item, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2796 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ooh. Megan.
Orders number 2796, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund Budget to reallocate additional funds required for the filter project. Whereas the Water Works Department has determined funds previously appropriated in Schedule B of the FY 2023 budget ordinance for a dump truck and the Water Sewer Capital Project Fund, which funds have not yet been expended, would be better used to fund the wastewater treatment plant filter cloth project. And whereas the budget amendment as provided herein must be made upon the recommendation of the mayor and the approval of forfeits of the council of the city. Section one of ordinance number 2796 reads, the City of Salisbury's Water Sewer Capital Project Fund Budget is hereby amended as follows. Decrease revenue for project dump truck account 97030-469313-48045, description Pago, amount 185,000. Decrease expenditure for dump truck account 97030-577025-48045, descriptions vehicles in the amount of 185,000. Increase revenue for project filters account 97030-469313-XXXX, description Pago by 185,000. Increase expenditure for filters account number 97030-513026-XXXX, description Construction, by that same amount, which is 185,000.
Any questions or comments on this item? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All those in favor of approving ordinance number 2796 for first reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you.
Almost finished a whole bottle of water with that.
At this time, we will take any public comments. If anybody has a public comment, please grab a sheet there on the table by the door and fill it out. Write that to the city clerk.
Just in case if you have any questions, they need to contact you.
Yeah, that's all. Hello. My name is Megan Evans. I live here locally. I've grown up here, lived in the city for about three years now. I just have some concerns for the removal of the traffic signal at South Boulevard and Camden Avenue. I noticed they are transitioning to the flashing lights before they remove the signal, I think in June. I saw a traffic alert about it on, you know, WBOC or WMDT. But there is not adequate sight distance through the intersection, so I am hoping the council will review the design. If it's a, you know, cost measure to remove the signal, I understand that, but I do think it needs to remain a four-way stop and not have Camden yield to South Boulevard. And I would also ask that there may be provided some more signage in this transitional period because there has been none. And while I think that everyone should be assumed to understand a flashing yellow and a flashing red, as I've been driving it every day throughout the past week, everyone is kind of waiting to see who's gonna go, who's gonna approach into the intersection and take their turn. And the other issue with the sight distance is that I'm not sure what the city could do to correct that because on the west side of the intersection on South Boulevard, the sight distance is blocked by private hedges. On the opposite east side, it's blocked by a structural retaining wall. So I don't know that anything could be done about that, but I do think it's very difficult to see through the intersection without encroaching into the intersection. I took a closer look today when I was driving there and I was, my front wheels were past the crosswalk when I was able to see. So I was nosing into the intersection. It's just precarious and I would like it to be reviewed or considered. Thank you for your time.
Administration's taken your comments and they will pass them on to our traffic division.
Yeah, just finish filling that out so I can make sure.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll move into administration comments. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, first, I'd like to formally congratulate Mr. Kittero on his appointment city administrator. Next, if you can give blood, please give the blood. You're still low. On Saturday, we have Hops on the River. We also have opening day of the West Side Little League. And we, let's see, Sunday, I'm gonna do a proclamation for Holocaust Memorial Day. And again, as a reminder to everyone, the ribbon cutting for Ann Street Village will be April 21st at 12:00 PM. And we hope that everybody gets a chance to get out there, participate in the ribbon cutting, and then get a tour of the facility. We're looking forward to it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna switch it up. We're gonna start down here with Megan tonight.
Thank you. So same day as the ribbon cutting for Ann Street, that's that Friday from 12:00 to 5:00 at the Newton Community Center, there will be a jobs fair for anyone. It's open to all Salisbury residents, so it doesn't have to just be for, you know, it's open for recent graduates of high school students, but it's open to anyone. There'll be plenty of resources there, people who are gonna point you in directions for training services and certifications if you're looking to go down that path. Someone will be there to look at a resume, and I believe there'll be representatives from the state of Maryland too to help you get set up. So please feel free to come out from 12:00 to 5:00. Just again, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. Our area remains in a critical situation for blood. We're very low. Just make your appointment and donate blood. Thank you.
Jackson.
Well, all I can say is I had a wonderful Easter holiday. I would like to truly thank everyone who helped us with our 12th Annual Easter Acon. The Salisbury Fire Department was in attendance. Thanks Fire Station Two and Sixteen for being present, you know, working with the kids, giving them hats. I cannot acknowledge everyone, but I will acknowledge the VFW 10159. I will acknowledge We Here Car Club, who is always with me, them both, and the Thunder Guards. Believe it or not, they are always with me. Whatever I do, they contribute. They may not be always present, but they always contribute to our kids and the community. So I'd like to thank everyone, even my friends and my family, who helped. You don't know what a great effort and a great thought it was to even come forth because we had like 100, like over 100 kids. And usually, I'm at the Billie Jean Jackson Park. So a lot of people really got confused because they were looking for me to be at the Billie Jean Jackson Park, but I was at the Waterside Park, which is a city park, which is going to be used very regularly now that I'm no longer at the Billie Jean Jackson Park. I will use the Waterside Park and all the city parks that we have availed to us. I will be using them. Thank you so much for everything.
Ms. Gregory?
Just gonna put another plug in for the Hops on the River. I'm gonna be volunteering pouring beer, so, yeah.
Keep handing.
Yep.
Have your pours.
Come see me. You wanna come see me. Anyway, so that's going on Saturday from 1:30 to 4:00. So tickets are still available on the city website. You can go to salisbury.md/hops and get your tickets. Get them quick because they are going fast, so they won't be available for much longer.
Fortunately, I gotta work Saturday.
That's a shame. I would, I'll pour one out for you.
I might do my hops on the porch on Sunday. So anybody, next week, we start our budget session, so next Tuesday and Thursday. So those who are excited to watch that or would like to come live will be here. With that, we will adjourn the meeting, and I will entertain a motion to convene and close session.
So moved.
Second.
And so the Salisbury City Council will convene in legislative session Monday, April 10th, 2023 at 6:00 PM. Public is invited to attend Zoom or in person at approximately 7:20 PM. About 7:08 PM, upon adjournment of the legislative session, council will entertain a vote to convene and close session to consult with legal counsel to obtain legal advice on a legal matter under the authority of the Maryland Open Meetings Law, annotated code of Maryland General Provisions, Article 3-305B7. At this time, I will call for the question. All those in favor of moving into closed session, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. We are back at 7:50 PM. The Salisbury City Council came out of closed session to discuss a legal matter with our legal counsel and obtain advice on that matter. At this time, our meeting is adjourned. At this time, our meeting is adjourned.